Good morning, everybody. We'll start our 9/11 meeting. I am Katia McLean. I am the Managing Principal for Steinberg Heart Architects and President of the Board for the San Jose Downtown Association. Our agenda today is pretty simple. We have two candidate panels for District 4 and District 6 for San Jose City Council. And a reminder that today is 9/11. And it marks the 19th year anniversary of the terrorist attack of the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and the United Flight 93 crash in Pennsylvania. I will encourage you to take a moment throughout the day to remember our past and hopefully make us think and reflect on how the past can actually help us overcome our present struggles and divisions. With that, also a reminder that we have our annual meeting on October 9th, and then we can start our agenda for today. Councilmember Lauren Depp, thank you for turning on your camera. And candidate David Cohen, do you mind turning on your camera?
I turned it on. They disabled it.
All right, we'll figure out in a second. Remember that the questions have been given in advance to the council member and the candidate. The web links for both candidates have been posted on the San Jose Downtown Association Facebook event page. Please no additional questions today from the audience. However, you will be able to send some specific questions to each one of the candidates on their respective sites, and those will be posted also on our Facebook event page. So, welcome. Good morning. Again, I will answer 10 questions. We will go alternating in between each one of you. And let's just have fun some morning addressing some of the comments that we have. So please introduce yourselves. And a reminder, you have one minute for each one of the responses. So, councilmember Depp, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, go ahead. Thank you, Katia, and thank you. Good to see you, David, albeit virtually. I am councilmember Lon Depp. I'm the current incumbent representing District 4, which encompasses Beriasa, Albezo, North San Jose. And it has been my honor to do so, and I'd like to continue on for a second term. I think that San Jose has made great strides in the last few years. And we continue to do so even despite these challenging times. In these past, what, six months already, seven months during this pandemic time, San Jose has had to shift and do things that we as a city weren't really built to do, distribute food, keep public health, or support that effort. And we've done well despite unprecedented challenges. Leading up to that, we were on a great course towards reshaping our city. We did a lot with the downtown in terms of raising the height limits on buildings, working towards building a world-class transit center with a Deirdredon Station. And a lot of that momentum is still happening. It's slowing down a bit because of things outside of our control that are impacting the entire world. But San Jose has been and continues to be on the correct course to bring us into the same echelon as great world-class cities. And part of that is bringing Google here. I know the Downtown Association has been a great partner in doing that. And I look forward to continuing on. I don't see a timer, so I don't know how long my minute is up. But...
Yeah, we'll wrap it up, and then we'll talk about Google in one of the questions.
Sure. I just would appreciate the effort to continue on, continue serving, and apply the experiences and the lessons that I've learned in the last nearly four years.
Candidate Cohen, do you mind introducing yourself?
Okay, well, thank you. And thank you to the Downtown Association for hosting this morning. I really would prefer to be there with all of you in person. This is a very unusual circumstance to see my friend Lon in a box instead of being able to give him a handshake is kind of different. I've called District 4 my home for over 22 years, raised my family here. I have a PhD in chemical engineering and have been working in high-tech at Lam Research for over 20 years, 15 of those in North San Jose, inside District 4. I've also been serving on the school board in the Beriasa School District for the last 14 years and before that on the San Jose Library Commission. And I love serving the community and interacting with neighbors. But five years ago, when this seat opened up on the council, the community, a lot of members of the community asked me to step up and run. But I was focused on my career in high-tech and my family. My kids were younger. They weren't ready for me to make this commitment. And I was also focused on the work we do every day for strengthening our local public schools as a school board member. The last few years, I've seen many of the issues in our communities get worse and problems continue to grow in the city and believe that our district needs and deserves a stronger advocate in City Hall. So this time, people came forward again, asked me to run. I decided I couldn't say no, and so I've decided to run for the seat in this cycle. And I look forward to discussing some of the many important issues during this forum this morning.
Excellent. Thank you both. A reminder, you will see the timer with 30 seconds, and then when it disappears, your time is up. So I don't want to interrupt you in the middle or put the music like in the Oscars. So just make sure that you're...
Just to be clear, I didn't see the timer during the opening. Is it going to be showing up for the other questions? Because it wasn't there.
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
There you go. So, councilmember Depp, I will start with you. How has San Jose done in the past six months responding to the COVID crisis and how are the conditions on your district?
Sure. It's hard to assess with any, to grade how the city's done on the COVID crisis. We're still in the midst of it. But I would say, given that we're making it up as we go along, given that no one at the city was expecting something like this to happen, I think we've done fairly well. Of course, there are things that could be better with the benefit of hindsight. But we shifted the entire machinery of government from doing things that we normally do to feeding not just San Jose residents, but residents across the entire county, putting our city staff, moving them to that effort to help hungry folks. We've passed a paid sick leave for essential workers, frontline workers. We've passed an eviction moratorium for renters, potentially having to be evicted because they lost their jobs and were impacted by COVID, so on and so forth. My district, District 4, is impacted like everywhere else. There are very poor parts in our area, underserved parts like Albezo, that are impacted. But on the whole, I think we are in a good shape relative to other parts of the district. We are, for the most part, homeowners in Beriasa, and we have places to shelter in place. So I'm grateful for that.
Candidate Cohen?
Okay. Well, I do think San Jose has done a good job, and it followed along with Santa Clara County guidelines. And I am proud to live in Santa Clara County, which has been a national leader. I'm responding to the COVID crisis. The pandemic has certainly exposed clear differences in how people in different zip codes are affected by COVID. And through my work on the school board, I've seen these disparities firsthand. Our schools provide critical access to meals and technology, and closing of schools has added to the anxiety for many who rely on our schools as a safety net. And I saw that in the spring as I was distributing meals and helping with access to Chromebooks to our students who needed really to get help in order to continue with their studies and to continue to stay healthy and safe. I'm proud of the work that our schools did to fill that gap back in the spring, and I know the city helped a lot during some of our breaks and has helped in other ways to help distribute food to our families. I'm also very proud that, thanks to the hard work of our district staff, we're successfully now in the fall offering a rigorous equitable program for all of our students, even though they can't be in the classroom in person. We're offering a good distance learning program.
Okay.
Sorry, my screen just... Am I still on?
Yes, you are. Please wrap it up.
Okay, sorry. So yeah, so now I am hearing that the council member is starting to, is calling on school district to try to have a conversation in October regarding distance learning. I'm glad that he's now joining us in this conversation. It shouldn't take seven months to start having conversations like this because these things are important. And I'm glad that he's going to be involved in some of these discussions on education.
Great. Candidate Cohen, the second question, I'll start with you. What is your position on defunding, reforming, or reimagining the San Jose Police Department? And again, a reminder, you have one minute.
Okay. Well, the reality is that there are people who feel that they're not being heard and not being served. And so we should be willing to hit pause and take a look at what's happening in our city. I am a parent and a homeowner, and it is important that we have safe and secure neighborhoods. And let me be clear, I don't think defunding the San Jose Police Department is the right path forward. But I do think we have to be open to significantly reforming the way we fund public safety services. I believe we should take this opportunity to do a holistic review of the kinds of services that San Jose police respond to, the kinds of calls that they take in order to determine if police response is the best course of action in all the cases. In some cases, there are more appropriate responses. And based on what we learn, we could redirect some of our police funding toward community services that will better serve our residents. Things like social workers, community service officers, job training programs, counseling services. There's lots of things that we can do to better provide services to our community. Then we can invest more heavily in policing where it works well and offer other needed services that might do a better job serving and getting better results. So the reality is that we should be thoughtful about the solution and not necessarily knee-jerk and condemning people who want to have these kinds of conversations.
Councilmember Depp, the same question for you.
Sure. So I'm not a proponent of defunding. I think that we need to have context applied to the conversation. This is a national conversation. And when we bring it to San Jose, we should speak about it in the light of San Jose. San Jose needs more police officers all across Beriasa, and I assume across the city. When I talk to residents, I hear folks wanting more police patrols, folks wanting a quicker response when crimes happen in their area. And the reality is, in San Jose, we have only about 1.1 officers for every 1,000 residents in the city. Contrast that with 10,000 residents per resident. And contrast that number with the six officers per 10,000 residents in Washington, DC. So it is a sliding scale. We lost a lot of officers during the pension reform issues of the early 2000s, and now we're still in the time of rebuilding. So yes, there are different ways that we can police, and we can reimagine that. And Mayor LaCardo has been pushing for that. I've been supportive of that. I'm particularly proud that one of my suggestions and bringing to the change in the duty manual has been accepted, and that is no knock warrants. So banning no knock warrants in San Jose except for exigent circumstances where there's some sort of dangerous destruction of evidence perhaps. But with those kind of changes, you can reform how policing happens. You can reimagine it, and you can make San Jose a much safer and inclusive place.
I'm talking about inclusivity. The next question is for you, councilmember Depp. How do you support the creation of affordable housing in your district when many of the residents may oppose it? Again, a reminder, you have a minute.
Yeah, sure. I don't think that residents in San Jose oppose affordable housing overall. I think they may have concerns about where it goes and relatively how close it is to where they live. But if you understand that San Jose or the city government in general is supportive of affordable housing, we have difficulties, many hurdles around getting there. And that is mainly due to the lack of land. Where would we build these? There are only limited number of sites available left to build such housing. And where would we do it and who would build it? It costs about $200,000 in subsidies to build an affordable unit. So even with a million dollars, you can only build not even 10 affordable units because the nature of affordable housing requires maybe a wraparound services and onsite services. So the building is different. So how do we fund that? We need investment and partnership from the private industry, private sector. We have passed an inclusionary housing ordinance across San Jose, 15%, and North San Jose, it is 20%. And I'm continuing to champion that and moving forward with more affordable housing in North San Jose particularly.
Candidate Cohen?
Well, having interacted with residents of District 4 for over 15 years, I actually believe that most of our community supports the creation of affordable housing. And I think councilmember agrees with that. We understand that the lack of affordable housing is making it difficult for our children to have a future here, for our teachers to live here, and leading to the increasing homelessness problems that we're seeing. Having said that, clearly, there are people who are skeptical of many of the local solutions. They don't want to think they're worried about projects that are being proposed nearby. And as an elected official, when those kinds of problems happen, we need to be accessible and responsive to listen to problems, listen to concerns, and take into consideration the concerns of residents. As to the councilmember's question about not having enough land to build affordable housing, I think we need to revisit our general plan because I think we have enough land to build affordable housing. I think if we enforced our inclusionary housing ordinance, we could build the affordable housing that's in our targets. I think if we built the 15% to 20% affordable inclusionary housing in North San Jose, North San Jose could be a place where we could have people of all kinds of socioeconomic backgrounds living together and creating a real vibrant community. The fact that we are sitting on all kinds of underutilized and vacant properties in North San Jose and then saying that we don't have enough land to build affordable housing, to me, is one of our big problems right now in San Jose.
Thank you, candidate Cohen. And as an architect, I'd be happy to talk to anybody about housing and construction. So, but candidate Cohen, you talked a little bit about homelessness, and that is the next question. Homelessness is increasing in San Jose. How would you work with a county to ensure that the most vulnerable and sheltered population receive mental and behavioral health services?
Well, this has been an important issue for me over the years. As a school board member, I've long been a proponent of improving access to mental health services for our students. And I've seen how providing social workers and counselors for our students improves behavioral and academic outcomes. And so I believe that we can do a similar thing in our city by adding more mental health professionals on the ground to interact in our homeless community, talking directly with people in our unhoused individuals and finding out what kinds of services they need and tailoring individual solutions to them rather than trying to find one-size-fits-all solutions. Providing this kind of care will require regional cooperation, not just with the county, but with our neighboring cities. That way, we can pool our resources and support nonprofits who are better suited to provide these kinds of services.
Thank you, candidate Cohen. Councilmember Depp?
Sure. So as we addressed the homelessness issue or even the issue earlier about affordable housing, yes, there are plenty of vacant parcels of land across San Jose. But I think one thing I recognize, that I hope my opponent also recognizes, that there's a thing called private property rights. And just because you see something vacant doesn't mean the city can come in and just take it and say, "Let's build this, and this is what we're going to build because this is what we need." There are huge vacant parcels in North San Jose. They're owned by private families or Apple companies, and what they do matters. And so we need to talk and work with them. But ultimately, the vision for that land comes from the landowner and not from the city. When we built tiny homes, or we're discussing tiny homes across all districts for the entire city, we could only find one or two parcels available for each district, including in District 4. So our ability to do this is very much constrained by land use and by rules. You can't build near a creek. You can't build too close to a school. And so it's not just, oh, here's a vacant parcel. Let's put in a shovel in the ground. So there are these nuances to governing, and you need that sort of understanding to really make progress. You shouldn't have to learn while you're doing it.
Thank you, councilmember Depp. The next question is, I'll start with you. Do you support the so-called split-rolled property tax initiative, Prop 15, and if you do, why or why not?
Yeah, so I'm not supportive of the split role. And I feel that, again, in going with, we have to work with the private sector. We have to use them as partners and form public-private partnerships. We have demanded a lot and continue to demand a lot from the private sector. In the last two years or so alone, we passed a measure where if you sell commercial property worth over $2 million, there's an additional tax that goes towards things like affordable housing. We, most recently, just a few weeks ago, a few days ago, passed the commercial linkage fee, again, a fee on per square foot of building a commercial space downtown and across the city. And so we've asked a lot from our commercial developers. Now you add on potentially a split-rolled tax. I think it becomes onerous to do business in San Jose. I mean, the split role would be statewide. But then in San Jose, you tack on the, I think it was Measure E, and then this commercial impact fee, and it slows things down. We are in somewhat of an economic slowdown. And so finance is not easy, and building these things are complex. So we want to make it as, not easy as possible, but still feasible for people who want to come to San Jose to build, because we must remember that they have choices. There's nothing that demands that they come to San Jose.
Candidate Cohen?
Well, as someone who works in high-tech and who sees the bottom line in school district budgets as a school board member, I understand the tension between our limited resources and the needs of our community. And while I understand the concerns of those who are opposed to this measure, I believe we must amend Proposition 13. In order for businesses to continue to thrive in our area, we need an educated workforce, and our schools need adequate funding to provide one. California schools used to be the envy of the nation. Now we are woefully underfunded. So let me talk a little bit about our school district. As a result of being so low in funding, districts like Beriasa, where I am on the board, are last in the nation in librarians per student, last in the nation in counselors per student, last in the nation in nurses per student. We're now talking about reopening schools in the area of COVID. We have 13 schools, and we can only afford one and a half nurses. And everyone understands that in order to open in COVID, we're going to need one nurse per school. But we can't even afford to do that because of the lack of limited funding. Every time there's an economic downturn, class sizes increase, programs are cut, and we have to fight to preserve things that are called extras, like PE and music.
Ten seconds.
California schools, sorry, California schools no longer offer enrichment, computer science, foreign language, and machine shop, other programs we once took for granted. In order to get back to where we need to be, we need adequate funding for schools.
Okay. Thank you, candidate Cohen. And I'll switch it up a little bit to talk about small businesses. The small businesses are the backbone of the city's tax base, and they have been disseminated by the pandemic. What initiatives would you support or propose for the recovery of the San Jose small business community? Candidate Cohen?
Yeah, we all know that small businesses who employ many of our residents are the backbone of our economy. And so this question is tremendously important. The well-being of our small businesses are crucial to the recovery. So we need to do all we can to save and help small businesses that have been hurt so badly in the last six or seven months. Cities should certainly work with the state, work with the county to help the small businesses navigate federal and state programs that are available. And I'm really glad that the governor signed into law this week several new initiatives to provide aid to small businesses. And I want to see our businesses be provided with resources to help get that aid as quickly as possible. I'm glad that the city has been putting COVID relief money into programs like the Small Business Rent Relief Program. Rent relief is really going to be really important for small businesses as we work our way back out of the pandemic. The city should also be giving local small businesses preferences when awarding contracts. It's always in our interest to keep city money local in the city. So we should continue to do these things and also find creative solutions such as the outdoor dining and outdoor operations in order to keep our businesses as operational as possible.
Councilmember Depp?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with what David is saying. I mean, I'm proud to have been a part of a lot of things that he's talking about. You know, we are constrained as a city by public health rules that are determined by the state and the county. So we kind of get those orders and play within that sandbox because we have to promote the public health first and foremost. But as we go about saving lives, it's just as important to do the good work of protecting livelihoods. You know, the people are small business owners. A lot of them are immigrants or migrants. They are the foundation, as everyone says, the backbone of our economy. So within those constraints, we've done things like, as Councilmember Deb Davis proposed, alfresco dining. So allowing, you know, relooking at our land use laws, allowing private parking lots and public sidewalks and for shops and restaurants to open up there so we can do outdoor shopping and still create some economic activity. Right now, we are offering $15,000 grants, up to $15,000 grants, for small businesses to pay their back rent from March all the way to the end of the year to help with that.
Ten seconds.
These are difficult times, but these are the ideas that we have been doing.
Thank you, councilmember Depp. And in the past, the city council has experienced many closed votes this year. Some call it, you know, business versus labor divide. Others describe it as moderate versus progressive. What do you see yourself in this trend and how it shapes the policy for the city? Councilmember Depp, I'll start with you.
Yeah, so I very much am a centrist, very much a moderate. I pride myself in digging through the memos and reading and listening to arguments and trying to keep an open mind and trying to come up with the best determination in a dispassionate manner. It's the lawyer in me. So I like delving into ideas. You know, you could call it the labor business divide or some sort of division on the council. But I actually think that's healthy for a democracy. I think the alternative is getting a unanimous council full of yes people beholden to one's group or another. And that's not healthy for San Jose. I think when there are differences, people are contributing value to it because there are legitimate points of view on any side of the aisle. But you have to layer on the San Jose context and not just take it straight out of, you know, straight out of the party platform from somewhere. And so I value the arguments that my opponents, and sometimes I feel that they educate me in it. And I hope that I educate them as well. But the 6-5 vote, I know it's like, if we're on the losing end of it, you want to shift the council. But ultimately, I think that kind of diverse city and thought is healthy for our democracy and healthy for San Jose.
Candidate Cohen?
I believe that a successful city is one where both business and labor thrive together. At a fundamental level, one can't succeed without the other. And so I believe it's a false dichotomy to say that one side has to win and the other side loses on many of these issues. So I hope to be a council member who will work to find consensus on issues rather than perpetuate a divided council. Having said that, I will also always take into consideration that the most vulnerable residents of our city are working-class residents who must be able to afford to live here in order to support the businesses and lifestyle that we need in order to have a vibrant community. If teachers, firefighters, hospitality workers, government employees, and those that we're now calling essential workers can't make a living here, the long-term viability of our economy is at risk. And I believe the pandemic has shown us just how important frontline workers really are. And so I think that we need to work together to create a livable, functioning, thriving community, livable for everyone. That'll end up meaning less traffic, stronger communities, and more resources for everyone.
We have three more questions to go, so we're almost there. Candidate Cohen, the city's development agreement with Google for Downtown West will be voted in spring of 2021. What is your position on the project and what it means, you know, for the future of the city?
Well, I I believe Downtown West Development is a great opportunity for San Jose, and I think if it's done right, it can be transformative project for the city. The project will bring more affordable housing into the downtown core and strengthen local business. I also believe it's important that we hold Google accountable for the promises they've made and make sure that benefits are felt by families across the city and not just Google's high-tech workforce. So I look forward to being a part of a long and lucrative partnership between Google and the city.
Councilmember Diop.
Yeah, so I I haven't seen what Google's going to do. So I I'll withhold committing that, oh, I'm going to rubber stamp whatever Google brings. But I I, you know, it's no secret that I'm excited to have Google come to San Jose. I think they've been a great partner. You know, they are one of the driving factors behind the the implementation of the commercial linkage fee. And they they're going above and beyond because it's not just accepting and agreeing to a fee, but they're also agreeing to work with the city to do a development agreement, wherein they're going to commit to community benefits and certain things that typically you you don't need to do when you just build something and you own the land and and such. So they've been a good partner, and I do think that, you know, the Google effect will follow. And as we've seen in London, as we've seen in in other cities where there is a Google campus, they tend to attract other business and other developments and enliven the streets. And so I feel most excited by Google because I feel like this, they will inject newfound life into our downtown, you know, create a walkable community and, you know, integrating with the San Jose State University and our San Clara streets and others, creating walking paths. And I'm excited for that because that's really ultimately what excites me, place making as a council member.
Thank you, Councilmember Diop. And as you know, the San Jose is established in a racial equity office. What is your equity focus and where does the city need to most improve?
Yeah, so I I think the city of San Jose, I voted to help pass through the the racial equity office, so I'm I'm supportive of it. As a city, there are disparities across San Jose. And I think what's important, from my view, for this office to do is to help the city and help our residents gain better access to the services we provide. So that may mean language access, it may mean access for people with disabilities to our parks, creating an ability for everyone to enjoy our city equally. But I think we have to recognize that the city of San Jose is still under budget for a lot of the things we do. There are many things we do and not all of it well. We are still understaffed. And so I'm focused on doing basic things well. To borrow, to borrow a phrase of Kit Parkness, somebody that works at San Jose, one of our deputy city managers, being brilliant at the basics, and and that is very much where my focus is. So I'm I am happy that we're expanding. We have the Office for Immigrant Affairs, the Office of Racial Equity. All of this stuff is important in building a vibrant San Jose. But we should invest our resources and make sure that we don't spread ourselves too thin.
Candidate Cohen.
Well, let's be clear, the the proposal to have an Office of Racial Equity was brought forward a year earlier, and the council majority, including the current council member, voted against it. And the incumbent wrote an op-ed in the Mercury News saying that the idea of doing that was politicizing the budget. So it was only now that with heightened awareness of racial disparities and the movements that are happening with protests that the council agreed to start the office. The office should have been started even earlier. The issue here is not about whether we need to spend more money solving racial disparities than investing in racial equity, but when we spend money in our budget, whether we're doing it through a lens of of racial justice and equity. So for example, this summer, when when we were dealing with pushing for digital equity, are we investing in the right parts of the city to make sure that people have access to broadband and Wi-Fi and and computers? When we're starting to electrify our transportation network, are we doing it first in parts of the city that have traditionally been exposed to bad air quality because they're nearer to highways than bus routes and not doing it across other parts of the city that don't need it first? When we're building affordable housing developments and homeless shelters and forcing high-density developments into parts of the city, are we continuing to force those into parts of the city that have always taken that burden, or are we spreading it out across the city? It's about making sure that we're not continuing to put burdens of certain things into certain parts of the community and that we're spreading out the burdens across the entire city.
Thank you, Candidate Cohen. And I'll finish with a three-part question, but it's a fun one. So Candidate Cohen, when was the last time that you were downtown? How did you feel with that visit? And if you dined or had lunch there, where did you go?
Okay, well, I was just downtown a couple of times in the past week, actually. I I do always enjoy being downtown. There's a lot of potential, and I'm excited about what can come when when Bart comes downtown and we continue to add more retail and options for people downtown. I had lunch outdoors faithfully last week at at San Pedro Market. I actually had some carryout just this past weekend from Old Spaghetti Factory. It's my son's favorite place, and it was his birthday, so we, I came down, I got, we got food there. I I do miss being downtown for cultural activities and used to come down weekly for rotary lunches at the Summit Center. And it's certainly not the same doing it over Zoom, so I hope I'll be able to do that more frequently in the near future.
Thank you, Candidate Cohen. Councilmember Diop.
I I was just downtown yesterday. I didn't dine, I went to the bank, and then I walked over to Phil's Coffee and outside grabbing a coffee. So I walked some of it and I'm, you know, it's it's not what it used to be in terms of the the hustle and bustle of of downtown. But there there is a a certain charm I'm seeing to the outside Alfresco Dining and, you know, people sitting out in San Pedro Street and students, you know, out in the, out in the sidewalk and the, in the paso, waiting for coffee. So it's slowly coming back, and I know people are excited and they're looking for normalcy. And I'm very much working hard to to get San Jose back to that as soon as we can.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Candidate Cohen, those are, that completed, you know, the 10 questions. But, you know, a minute to close, anything that you that you would want to tell us?
Okay, well, thank you so much for this opportunity. These are, you asked a lot of very important, tough questions, and obviously a minute doesn't always give them justice. So I hope we'll have a chance to follow up on a lot of these things in the next six weeks before people are voting. My experience working in local, a local tech company and serving our community and our schools will provide a unique perspective at City Hall, I believe. As a parent concerned about San Jose my children are growing up in and where they might want to raise their own families, I'm determined that this city will thrive for workers, for families, and for children. As a public servant and candidate for San Jose City Council, I'm asking for your support to continue serving the city that I love and to continue serving it with integrity and open door. I'm supported by nearly every community leader in the district and by great county leaders, such as supervisors Ellen Bergen Cortezzi, Senator Larry Stone, Congressman LaFrenz, and dozens of others. And I invite you to learn more about my campaign by visiting electdavidcohen.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Candidate Cohen. Councilmember Diop.
Yes, thank you. It's been a great joy of mine to serve on city council. I've learned a lot about myself and about leadership and about city government. There is a steep learning curve, no matter who gets into office, and I've overcome that hump. And I believe that the count, the District Four in the city would benefit by having me stay on to continue along the path that that we've had. San Jose is a wonderful city and has a lot more potential to show the world of how wonderful we are. And it's very, the time constraints in these sort of forums with one minute, it's hard to really get into the nitty-gritty. We're just kind of sharing top-line arguments and visions. I I don't feel that David and I are too far apart in a lot of things, but I do think that, you know, if we had more time to get into the weeds of things, the the kind of differences in terms of experience and understanding would come through. And I look forward to that discussion either in any other forum or through, you know, residents' contact us directly, just compare how we responded to various things. So I've been endorsed by Mayor Liccardo, former Mayor Chuck Reed, the SPO organization, and of course, the Mercury News. So I'm happy to have that support, and thank you so much for this opportunity to engage with the residents.
Thank you both, Councilmember Diop and Candidate Cohen for being with us this morning. And this concludes our D4 forum. And then we welcome Councilmember Deb Davis and Candidate Jake Tonko to have the same 10 questions that we have given them in advance. For those who have just joined us, please, there will be no additional questions from the audience live. But if you have any questions, please send those and address those to the candidates themselves on their respective sites. And we will provide web links to the candidates posted on the San Jose Downtown Facebook event. So, good morning, Councilmember Davis, and good morning, Candidate Tonko. And a reminder, you have one minute to answer the questions. I will go back and forth between the two of you and then a minute to wrap up at the end. So if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, Councilmember Davis, good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Councilmember Deb Davis, and I represent District Six in the city of San Jose. I am very grateful to have had the last four years as my first term as a council member in our city. And I'm very proud of how much my team and I have accomplished for not only our district, but our entire city. We have, we have begun to pave every street in the city of San Jose. We've added 300 new police officers and improved policing, including a burglary unit, the street crimes unit, and as many of you know from downtown, our foot patrol. We've also been able to add life-saving Lucas chest compression devices. And I I started that effort, and we were able to fund that for all of our fire engines in this most recent budget cycle. I've also pushed for affordable housing in my district as well as citywide, so many of you already know that. So I'm running for for more years to continue that, but also because COVID has really devastated our city, as you all know. And I know you've had that discussion already with the, with the other council member and and candidate. Thank you. And we really need experienced leadership and ideas for how to help our businesses survive and thrive as we come out of the pandemic. Thank you.
Candidate Tonko.
Thank you very much. I mean, these opportunities are really important because, as we should really be honest with ourselves, San Jose is at a crossroads. We are one of the most unequal cities in the entire country. Last year, we had a 42% spike in homelessness. 50% of students at Lincoln High School, just down the road from me, require free or reduced lunches. We really need to start to make decisions that put our entire community first. District Six is over 50% renter, and yet 25% of our entire district, half of those renters are rent burdened. We failed over the last few years to build the affordable housing we need. We've failed to make sure that our community feels invested. And that's what I want to do as District Six representative. Make sure that we're taking these difficult challenges, our unhoused population, our climate crisis, our inequality, and tying them in with how we provide quality city services to people in our community. We have to do both, we can do both, and that's what I plan to do.
Thank you, Candidate Tonko. And I forgot to remind you both, you know, our last 10 questions, but you will see at 30 seconds, the timer, the yellow card comes up. And then when it goes off, you know, your time is up. So hopefully, I don't, I don't have to interrupt you in the middle of your answer. But I'll start with Councilmember Davis in question number one. How has San Jose done in the past six months, responded to the COVID crisis? And how are the conditions in your district, our district, I live in D6, so?
Yeah, thank you, Katia. So I want to talk first about food and shelter because those are the most important needs for everyone. We've been delivering two and a half meals a week and helped with, the hospitality industry helped us, especially Team San Jose, to to do that. And and we facilitated kind of them retooling so that they could help us with with that as well. And as many of you also know, we've helped provide shelter, over 1,200 new shelter beds in in our city over that time as well. And and then in terms of business, of course, that's what's important to the Downtown Association. As as you may know, the mayor and I put forward the Alfresco program, which allowed outdoor dining, made it easier to do that. I also pushed for having our city parking lots available as well and personally worked with with our districts, businesses in our district, to be able to help them to do do business outside. So retail is hurting, and and I'm very much looking forward to to us getting back to business.
Candidate Tonko, same question for you.
The the city took some good first steps. We implemented a paid sick leave policy. We provided rental relief, an eviction moratorium. I was personally out with city staff delivering meals to people. But it's still been a little disappointing to realize that our commitment as a city has not been about creating the proper conditions to shelter in place. We're trying to build a resilient community. That means sick leave policy that doesn't end at the end of this emergency declaration, so that next time an emergency happens, people can stay home. My team and I realized that District Six really needed a proactive approach. So we called 13,000 people starting in March, asking them what they needed, providing opportunities to reach the, to food resources, to testing sites. And what we found is the majority of people in District Six need help with rent. As I said before, so many people in our district are rent burdened. We have to make sure that we're providing that opportunity for them to know the steps moving forward, to fill out that form, to contact their landlord and come to an agreement. And that has to be a better push from the city of San Jose.
And Candidate Tonko, I'll I'll go with you for question number two. What is your position on defunding, reforming, or reimagining the San Jose Police Department?
Well, we've heard from the community something I'm supportive. We absolutely have to start to reimagine what SJPD does. 20 to 50% of an officer's time can be spent dealing with our unhoused community or on calls that they're not the primary professional trained to respond. As we move forward, we have to start to invest in educational opportunities, job opportunities, after-school programs, because as we do, we create a safer community. We actually make the jobs of our officers easier, and then we allow them to be more efficient. We allow them to spend less time dealing with areas that they're not experts in and then responding to the community in a more efficient way. If we can invest in improved 911 emergency allocation, then we can get officers to residents faster. We can get them in the community more often, and I think that's really our path forward for the city.
Councilmember Davis, same question for you.
Thank you. Our department is already one of the most thinly-staffed of all of big cities. So defunding the the police department just is not practical. Furthermore, while there have been recent calls for defunding the police by some members of our community, we know, and I know, from all the many calls and emails and conversations I've had with residents over many years, that what they want are are more police officers and a better police presence in our city. We don't want to go back to the time when residents were calling 911 and not getting a response, at least not a timely response in their calls for service. At the same time, I admit, the mayor admits, and and SJPD as well, admits that the department has work to do and is continually improving. That's why I support the expansion of independent police auditors' powers. That's an office that allows for external reform and accountability, and it certainly makes sense to to continue along on that path for reform that we have been on.
Councilmember Davis, how do you support the creation of affordable housing in our district when many of the residents may oppose it?
Yeah, quite simply, because it's the right thing to do, that's why I do it. And and as as many housing developers know, when they come to me and ask me about a project in my district or propose a project in my district, I'm always asking them to increase the number of units to make sure that the site is fully built out, whatever they're proposing. And at the end of the day, what it comes down to for me, for residents, is really listening to their concerns, both what they've stated and what might be underlying the concerns that they're talking about, and then trying to address the entire issue. Because when it comes down to it, housing people saves the city money in the long term, and it makes our city more appealing, which is actually improving home values. So home values is one of the concerns that gets brought up sometimes. But improving our city by actually housing people and in making our city more attractive is something that helps our home values over time.
Candidate Tonko.
I just have to say, pardon me, over 50% of District Six is renters. I've personally knocked on 12,000 doors in the district prior to COVID, and the number one concern from people is affordable housing, whether it's for themselves, for their adult children who can't live here, or our unhoused community. We do too often have a few vocal voices that misunderstand what affordable housing means for our city. Right now, a couple making $140,000 or less per year would fall under the need for affordable housing. This isn't just about our fast-food workers, it's about our teachers, it's about our nurses. And we have to move forward, building socio-economically diverse housing in that way. Because when we do, crime goes down, people can live close to where they work. We've tried this trickle-down housing model of just building whatever we can and hoping that we meet demand, and it's just not going to happen. What needs to happen is community engagement processes that do some educating and do some listening. As a former Peace Corps volunteer, my job was about community engagement. That's what I plan to bring to city council.
Thank you, Candidate Tonko. And you started talking a little bit about that, but homelessness, you know, homelessness is increasing in San Jose. How would you work with a county to ensure that the most vulnerable and sheltered population receives mental and behavioral health services? How would you work with a county to ensure that the most vulnerable and sheltered population receives mental and behavioral health services?
So I was super excited. Last month, I was endorsed by Senator Jim Bell, who spent his entire career working on mental health legislation. Something that the city needs to do is to partner more closely with Valley Medical Center. When Jim Bell was a county supervisor, input, implemented a health response team, mental health response team, pardon me, that worked with SJP to really deal with our unhoused population. But unfortunately, that partnership has been neglected. I think it's a program that we absolutely have to put time into. It's part of what reimagining SJP should look like. But then we also have to study the massive taxpayer savings that come with a housing-first model. We spend as a county about $60,000 per year per unhoused resident. And when we get them in a house, when we get them in a home, that cost to taxpayers goes down to $19,000, about $43,000 per year per person, because we're not letting them end up in emergency rooms or in jail. We have to take this double-sided approach to make sure we're getting people the care they need.
Councilmember Davis, same question for you.
Yes, it's definitely, um, appropriate and necessary to work collaboratively with the county. And that has been happening more over the last four years since I've been in office as well. Just personally, Supervisor Ellen Berg and I work very closely together on a myriad of issues. She is, she has endorsed me, as you, as you may know, District Six is, is almost entirely within County Supervisor Ellen Berg's district. And we, we share information. Our staffs work together. So that's just a very personal example of what's happening also with the city and the county staff. They have started meeting more, uh, more frequently. But at the end of the day, honestly, those, those health services and mental health services, uh, that my opponent was discussing, those were cut by the county. They were not, it was not something that SJP or the city said, we don't want anymore. Unfortunately, um, they were cut by the county. They did recently restart the Mobile Mental Health Crisis Unit. And we're very happy that, that they did that. And we have used it a couple of times actually in, in our district. So I'm very happy that we now have a shared assessment tool and a priority system to help people get the help that they need.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Um, do you support the so-called Split-Rolled Property Tax Initiative Prop 15? And if you do, why? And if you don't, why not?
It's, uh, it's not going to take me a minute to talk about this. Um, Proposition 15, while it's very long, is not something that I can support. And frankly, it's because it will, it, it might seem like a good idea on its face. Um, and, and for someone who definitely wants to improve our, our tax revenue in our city, um, it sounds like a great idea. But at, I think what it will actually do is increase in equities among different small businesses. The smallest businesses rent space. And as we've seen with other tax increases, property owners are going to pass those costs along to the small businesses who rent their space. I'm very concerned about that because right now, as we've talked about in previous questions, we know that our small businesses are desperately hurting and retail especially has been hurting. Our personal care businesses have been hurting. There's the ones that they have to have space. And we just cannot afford to have a rent increase for them right now. And we don't know what recovery is going to look like either. So I do not think now is that, I don't, I do not think now is the time.
Canada Tongo, same question for you.
I'm supporting Prop 15. I mean, we have to close an unfair tax loophole that's given benefit to our largest corporations in California and honestly push the tax burden onto homeowners and small businesses. When we passed Prop 13 years ago with the idea that it would keep seniors on fixed incomes in their homes. And what it's done now is just given tax breaks to our largest companies. I mean, Intel, for example, pays property taxes on 50 cents per square foot that they bought back in 1975. While Adobe, who bought land just this last year, and I know they're both big companies, Adobe pays $650 per square foot in terms of its property tax assessment. The split role means that this is not touching residential property. And then it actually has carve-outs for small businesses, up to half a million dollars in personal property tax relief for our small businesses. And then carve-outs for properties that have small businesses on them, so that large rental properties or rental properties that have small businesses don't have to raise rent. I mean, this is an incredibly important loophole to close for our state. And it will also bring in $81 million of the city of San Jose to cover our budget deficit during COVID for next year.
And both of you just touched base on small businesses. So that's my next question. Canada Tongo, they are the backbone of the city's tax base. I mean, it has been decimated with a pandemic. What initiatives would you support for the recovery of San Jose's small business community?
I think we're moving in the right step. Just this last week or two, San Jose has implemented some small business grants. I think Prop 15 will be able to give us the opportunity to protect small businesses and their rent. I know we need to put in stronger protections for businesses that haven't been able to open so that they're not evicted and they can continue to see relief in that space. It's something I've been working on for a long time. I started years ago, working locally on a public banking initiative so that we could provide low or zero-interest loans to our small businesses who often get faced with predatory-type lending or where priority gets shifted to our large corporations. We have to be able to invest in ourselves, and that's what that program was about. The other piece of this, we have to make sure that workers are doing well. 20% of San Jose doesn't have more than $400 in savings, which means they're not going out to eat. It means they're not enjoying our local businesses. We have to prop up our entire community. And that means making sure our community is paid fair wages.
Councilmember Davis, same question for you about small businesses.
Well, I think we, we all know that small businesses are the backbone of our economy and in the city combined, they actually employ a majority of our residents. So it's very important for, to me, for us to help small businesses. And what I, I talked a little bit about before was I pioneered the Alfresco Initiative with our mayor and personally worked to have our city parking lots included in that initiative. That's something that hopefully we can continue going forward is to have our Alfresco dining and, and Alfresco, um, businesses, because we do have such wonderful weather most days. I know today is overcast and cool. But it's been very important. Uh, we've actually had multiple rounds of small business grants through Silicon Valley Strong and then through the city, which we just launched this week. Again, very important for us to support our small businesses in whatever ways we can. And as we are going out of this, going forward, I think many of you know, I've worked on the development services transformation for tenant improvements for businesses as they're getting started up to go through the development and planning process.
And Councilmember Davis, uh, I'm going to switch to the next question, but you know that in the past year, the San Jose City Council Council has experienced many closed votes. Some call this the business versus labor divide. So some of them describe it as the moderate versus the progressive. What do you see yourself in this trend and how it shapes policy for the city?
Yeah, in terms of, uh, in terms of the divide, I've actually, I've thought a lot about this and, and I think Councilmember Depp actually talked about this as well. It's really not a bad, a bad divide. Both sides, um, ultimately want the same thing, a successful and a thriving San Jose. And we can, we can have disagreements as long as we can do that reasonably agreeably. When it comes to personal attacks, I don't support that and I don't participate in that. And frankly, that's a pretty new thing on the council that hasn't been something that we've historically done, even though that so-called labor-business divide has been on the council for a very long time. I personally, thank you. I personally consider myself fiscally pragmatic and more socially moderate. I've been to swing vote a couple of times and not in a Brown Act on the budget, for example, and in previous years. And I know how important it is to make sure that not only we're looking at compromise between the members of the council, but also to make sure we're listening to all the voices in our city.
Canada Tongo, some question for you.
It, it's certainly been an interesting to watch over the last couple of years and then, you know, more divisively over the last few months. And I think it's because we're feeling so much struggle within San Jose. As I mentioned in my opening statement, we are one of the most unequal cities in the entire country. And that comes with emotion, that comes with fear, that comes with the people that are scared about being protected by their, and represented by their local legislatures. Extremely excited to run probably the only corporate-free, developer-free campaign that has made it to a runoff in San Jose City Council. Because what that allows me to do is ensure residents that I'm listening to everybody. I mean, there are going to be good ideas that come from both sides. And what we want to be able to have is compromise. And when we're truly listening to residents, when we have opportunities for all of our candidates, moving towards things like publicly funded elections and more transparent funding processes. We're going to be able to see a council that is there for the right reasons, that's going to work together. And I'm excited to start that for our city.
Thank you, Canada Tongo. And, uh, we have a couple more questions to go. So, um, let's talk about Google. The Cities Development Agreement with Google for Downtown West will be voted in spring of 2021. Um, it seems like a long time, but what is your position on the project and what it means for the future of the city?
I think we're in a really awesome position. But I'm also very concerned. I mean, Google has the potential to do a, a lot of good for the community, but they have to buy into what the community is asking. Deer Don Station, you know, the Google Station area plan is going to affect so much of District Six. And as I was out knocking on doors across the Alameda, in North Will Glen, different areas of the district that directly surround this plan, people are concerned. There are already rising rents in the area and families are being pushed out, small businesses are being pushed out. What we have to do is hold Google accountable. And the way that we do that is having a strong council that understands if they're not willing to come in and mitigate that displacement, mitigate that gentrification and put the city of San Jose first, then we have to hold strong. I mean, unfortunately, Google has tried to make their $250 million Affordable Housing Grant to the Bay Area a point of pride for them. I mean, that's the same if you made $89,000 last year and donated 250 bucks towards affordable housing. And I'm sorry, that, that's if you pocketed after you paid rent, mortgages, whatever you need to pay. So when we're asking for them to be a partner with us, we have to make sure that they're actually partnering and not just putting PR stunts that are going to make us love the fact that they're coming in. We're going to have a lot of challenges moving forward, but I'm excited to work on them.
Councilmember Davis, some question for you.
Yes, I support the, um, the project. And I love that it is coming into Deer Don, which is going to be a huge regional transportation hub. And I think it will very much enliven that area. There are a number of benefits. That, that the project itself will bring to the city in addition to what we've already seen, which is kind of spurring an interest in other development in our city, uh, which I hope will continue. But it will also provide additional tax revenue. So we, we have a lot of parking lots, as you, as you know, in the Deer Don area. And developing on those parking lots will provide additional tax revenue that we can use to help improve our services, our city services for all of our residents. That's very important as, as we all know about the jobs-to-employed-resident ratio, fewer than one job per employed resident here means that before COVID, we were exporting 100,000 workers every day. We also, by keeping them closer to home, will have environmental benefits. In addition, Google has already committed to providing 25% of the units, housing units that they're doing to providing affordable housing in those units.
Thank you, Councilmember. And, um, the next question is for you. San Jose is establishing their racial equity office. What is your equity focus and what does the city need to most improve?
Yes, I think, uh, it was a logical next step as we've been participating, we were participating for over two years in the Government Alliance on Racial Equity nationwide. So having our, our own office was a logical next step. But we, we've learned from that work that we have two fundamental, uh, areas where we need improvement. First, we need to constantly educate ourselves and learn more, and that is especially true for those of us who are white. Uh, and frankly, it's, it's not super comfortable to, to talk about it. But, but people with lived experiences, um, can't be the only ones doing this work. It's definitely something we all have to do, and that's why we supported the creation of this Office of Racial Equity at this time. Uh, secondly, you know, unraveling centuries of, of systemic and, and organizational inequalities is not thank you. It's something that's going to take time and resources, which we're going to have to balance with our very real budget limitations. Um, but I'm committed to, to doing this work because I know that a more equitable San Jose is ultimately a more successful and a more thriving San Jose for everyone.
Canada Tongo, some question for you about racial equity office.
Back when I launched this campaign, you know, July of last year and, and pre-COVID, we put equity as the number one priority. When we address equity, when we address inequality, we're going to address our affordable housing properly. We're going to make sure that the historic redlining of San Jose isn't perpetuated in keeping our low-income families, low income and struggling. This has been something that I've been aware of for decades. And it's an unfortunate piece that our city is just realizing it now. I mean, the council rejected the Office of Racial Equity just a year ago. And simply now, because COVID has shown a light on the racial inequities in our community, do we have certain city council members coming around and saying, now is the time? We need the perspective that understands racial equity, how we move forward as a city. It is paramount in every decision that we make. And I'm excited for the Office of Racial Equity to hold us accountable. Because when we give away millions of dollars in subsidies for luxury apartment development, for other developments that gentrify and displace our black and Latino community members, that we need an office that's going to say, I'm sorry, council member, you're wrong. That data is not right. Look at the disparity that comes in our black and brown community. It's something we baked into the campaign from the very beginning and something I'm excited to bring to the City Council.
Thank you, Canada Tongo. And the last question is the final one. You know, have you, when was the last time that you were downtown? You know, how did you feel with that visa? Did you dine or had lunch there? Where did you go?
I wish I could make this one a little bit more lively. I was downtown on Sunday in the heatwave, passing out Gatorades and waters to our unhoused community. As I said, we are struggling as a city. And we have to take care of our most vulnerable residents first, because that's how we're going to build everyone up. We have the opportunity to do that, um, but it has to be extremely intentional. The time before that, I was downtown at City Hall with the Black Lives Matter protesters who were listening to music, sharing poetry, riding their bikes around. I mean, it's extremely lively downtown experience, knowing that our community, specifically our youth community, is coming together to push for a better city. We have some great opportunities to come out of our COVID emergency with a better city, and I'm extremely excited about that.
Councilmember Davis, some question for you.
Yeah, I was, uh, downtown a week or so ago to drop off some library books because library books are now due. After they had been, they had been extended multiple, multiple times. So I had to take back my library books from February. And I was able to bring my son along with the promise of Starbucks. He's a teenager, so he only comes along with the, with the promise of Starbucks. Had to bribe him. So that was the only place, uh, that I, that I went. And, um, but it was nice to do a little bit of rubber neck, necking and see San Pedro Square. Very lively and have the Alfresco dining out there. It, I'll, I'll be honest, I was, I was a little sad. It was about three o'clock in the afternoon on a weekday and these are the days that normally, you know, I would be downtown and be able to see, to see all the activity on the street and not having the San Jose State students there. The Paseo was a lot quieter than, than it used to be, all, all of that. So I, I think it was, it was encouraging to me to see the restaurants taking advantage of the Alfresco. And to see San Pedro taking over the whole street. But I think I'm really looking forward to getting our downtown back and having our downtown activities. And for those of you who may remember, we also really need to bring back the Sonic Runway. Councilmember Prowlis and I had that memo and we were in the process of doing that. We were supposed to get it this year. So I'm looking forward to having that come back downtown and getting that.
So I'm looking forward to having that come back downtown and getting that installed and having some more nightlife in San Jose.
Thank you both. We have a couple of minutes left. I will allow you, you know, a minute for each one of you to do a closing and tell us, you know, anything else that you would want, you know, the audience to listen from you. Councilmember Davis?
Well, first, I want to thank everyone for watching or tuning in and however you're doing that today, and thank you for listening. Really, we are still working hard for our residents in District Six during this time of crisis, and now is the time for experienced leadership so that we can speed our recovery in the city of San Jose. That is why I'm running, and I'm proud to be supported by our current mayor, Sam Liccardo, former mayor Chuck Reed, our vice mayor Chappie Jones, as well as many of my colleagues. And as I had mentioned before, county supervisor Susan Ellenberg, and the Mercury News, the League of Conservation Voters, and many others. In terms of what I want to do in the new term, recovery is number one and continuing to fight homelessness and its impacts, as well as ensuring the continued fiscal health of our San Jose Clean Energy, which we didn't get to talk about at all. But that's also important, and continue our infrastructure improvements, which is through our Measure T dollars. Again, thank you.
Candidate Tonko.
As I said, we're at a crossroads as a city. And the silver lining to our COVID emergency is that it gives us the opportunity to pause and look at what kind of city we want. November is going to be a very important month for people, because we're going to come together and decide, is San Jose a city for all our working-class families? Are we going to continue to build luxury apartments and to push people out of our city? This opportunity for leadership that understands not just what's going wrong during COVID, but that what were the leading causes that brought us to where we are. And as I said, San Jose has the opportunity to make some significant changes. We put in a paid sick leave policy that's going to expire. We're still trying to get rent relief, because so many people have wages that are not keeping up with what profits are doing for our largest corporation. When we talk about fiscal responsibility and accountability at City Hall, we have to talk about making sure we're addressing and being proactive to our biggest issues, our climate crisis, our affordable housing, and our homelessness, knowing that when we provide quality city services all around, that we start to tackle those programs efficiently, effectively, and responsibly. And that's what I'll do in November, once elected.
Thank you, candidate Tonko, thank you, Councilmember Davis, you know, this morning for allowing me, you know, to ask some questions. A reminder for the audience that we, you can, we have posted web links for each one of the candidates in our Facebook event. And again, thank you for also candidate Cohen and Councilmember Depp for staying with us. And a reminder that we still have our October ninth annual meeting and hope to see, to see you all guys in some type of webinar, you know, platform, you know, pretty soon. So thank you, everybody, and have a good day.
Thank you.